Committee, but I will go over them again just so you have clarity. The committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out one of these white forms. If you see the gentleman there is over there filling out one of the forms now. And register to, again, speak or speak in support, or you can just check that you're here, again, either in support or in opposition. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be called to come to this desk up here and have a seat. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of registrants is as follows. After the petitioner or agent, any persons wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given up to five minutes to speak. If there is no, if there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will address the committee. That's the three of us here and not the audience. There will be no running debate. The committee will take action on a petition until the applicable, will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for towns to submit an action report to the county is the Thursday prior to the meeting date. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting, however, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is a public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the county board. If the committee passes a petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you attend the county board meeting. Committee action on conditional use permits is a final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the county board. The next county board meeting is August 17th. The next, the L R committee meeting is August 8th. Okay, next is consideration of minutes. We have our May, two meetings in May and our June meetings.
I'd like approval of all, we presented minutes?
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
And a second to approve the minutes, two meetings in May and two in June. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. Okay, first item on the, for rezone petitions is 11,154. Amy Frochweig?
Close, Freshway.
Freshway, in the town of Pleasant Springs.
Hi, so my name is Amy Freshway. This is my husband, Charles. The property location is our residential property, 2277 Rendon Road, and we're looking to change the zoning from RH2 to A2-4, and then also to get a conditional use permit to operate a failing limited business, and then also to have a bathroom in the building.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Basically, we have an aerospace welding shop in Cottage Grove and above. So we do work primarily for the F-35, but we have to do stuff for Rolls Royce and Boeing and Lockheed does mostly work on the F-35. So, bring a little shop home. So we do these small hydraulic plants. This is probably the largest ones that we do.
So is it always aircraft or?
Yeah.
It's exclusive, we're closed to the public.
Yep.
We're contracted with Department of Defense.
Just to give you an idea.
You don't have a class.
No, I actually tried to discourage it.
Okay. So we, we get maybe at most one FedEx delivery every morning, and we actually drive the parts to FedEx off of Kinsman Boulevard, just because it's faster.
I'd say it's been twice a week.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the board was, the board of Pleasant Springs was unanimous on their.
You could have neighbors come out and stipulate it.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. And then I'll ask, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Pleasant Springs has approved the rezoning petition and has approved the conditional use permit with several conditions. The conditions are listed in your package.
And you'll note that we have the CUP following the rezone.
I'll move approval of the zone. Second.
And you might do rezone first.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for the rezone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
I'd move approval of the CUP.
And we have a motion.
And a second with the 13 conditions.
And a second with the CUP with the 13 conditions.
And we've included 14 conditions.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope, and it's approved. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. Next is rezone petition 11,155. Kenneth Scholenberg in the town of Cross Plains.
I'm Kenny Scholenberg, and our property location is 3311 County Road P in town of Cross Plains. We're looking to change from RH3, a portion of our property, over to LC1 Limited Commercial to allow for my, the operation of my lawn and landscaping company on the site of the office.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with conditions limiting the land use to lawn care, landscaping, and snow removal on the property, the outside storage of materials and equipment. The hours of operation are limited, there's no signs, outdoor lighting shall be limited, and no onsite sales of materials, and the number of employees shall be limited to 20. Staff is suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on the properties to deed restrict proposed block one and two to tie them together so that they may not be sold separately.
I'll move approval with the town conditions and the condition that there be a deed restriction, tying the two lots together, so they're not sold separately. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with the town conditions and the staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone 11,156. Mary Henman in the town of Vermont.
Hi, I'm Mary Henman, and the property is on North Thumper Road in the town of Vermont. We're looking to change our home site slightly, so to change a part that's currently A1 add to RH1, and then unzone the current home site back to A1. So she's flipping the home site a little bit.
Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Vermont has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,157. James Lap in the town of Rutland. And there's a CUP also.
I bought the property at 3333 State Highway 138, and I'd like to take its B1 and A1 exclusive and turn it into C2 with the house as a caretaker or a watchman, and their surrounding property, I'm going to sell to Bruceheim. And it would be to run a large-scale landscaping, snow, tree removal business, and use the house as a caretaker or watchman. And I'd like to make the five-acre C2, and the remainder would be sold to Bruceheim.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm a jointing farmer, so the land will just go right onto my farm.
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Rutland has approved the rezoning petition as well as the conditional use permit. Staff is suggesting several conditions, limiting the land uses to landscaping, snow removal, tree care, similar contracting businesses, repair and storage of contractors' vehicles, machinery and equipment, outdoor storage of landscaping materials, and a residence for the watchman/caretaker. We also suggest that the outdoor storage area shall be shielded from view from Highway 138, prohibit off-premise signs or billboards. And let's see, prohibit also loudspeakers and lighted signage. Staff also recommends that the A2 parcel, which be deed restricted to prohibit further land divisions. This petition has been revised by the town of Rutland. They have suggested, instead of the A4 zoning district, that the large portion of the land be A-2 zoning district. They are suggesting that a condition be placed on the rezoning that states that the town must approve any home location.
And you're familiar with all of the town conditions?
Yep.
I'll move approval of the zoning with the stated conditions.
I'll second, I have a quick question. So the map at the top of the petition shows A4, so you're saying that's going to be A2 instead?
That is correct. When the town of Rutland approved it, they requested A-2 rather than A-5.
Okay, so we're, so the recommendation then is approval as amended by the town. Staff conditions.
Okay.
Just making sure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
The conditional use permit.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we have to, two steps.
We're just going to vote yes, so. I'll move approval of the CUP with the conditions provided by staff. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CUP. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thanks again.
You're welcome. Thanks for the catch. Okay. Next is rezone 11,158. Andrew Helverson in the town of Dunkirk.
Andrew Helverson, 2522 County Road A. I'm trying to change from R1, and I also have a little bit of C2, to all A2, to build a taller accessory building.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I have some, I'll try.
Okay, great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Dunkirk has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next is rezone petition 11,159. Vinny Acres in the town of Cottage Grove.
Dan Vinny, 1994, US Highway 12 and 18, Cottage Grove. We want to rezone from A1 exclusive to A2 to build the house.
Anything else you'd like to add? Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition. Staff is suggesting two conditions. The deed restriction be placed on the balance of the parcel that's being, retaining the A1 exclusive zoning to prohibit further residential development. And then the applicant must meet all Town of Cottage Grove and WISDOT requirements regarding location and installation of driveway providing access to the property. It is on State Highway 12 and 18, so access needs to be granted by the state.
You understand that?
Yep.
Supervisor Myers?
Just a quick question on the deed suggestion for the deed restriction on the remaining A property of land.
Mm-hmm.
Just to be clear, so that's, so there can't be any further development, i.e. division because the banking, the RDU's and so forth.
This is just a holding place. Mr. Vinny created a subdivision in a sending area. There were two RDU's left, residential dwelling units. We needed to put them somewhere because Mr. Vinny wasn't going to retain any of the blocks in that subdivision, so a deed notice places, so we have documentation that there's two residential dwelling units out there that need to be used up.
In the receiving.
In a receiving area, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. I'll move approval of the staff recommending conditions of the deed restriction and all Town Cottage Grove and DOT communications.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval with the conditions, including the town conditions and DOT communications. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
With the conditions. Next is rezone petition 11,161. Mark Niasse in the town of Verona.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Susan Niasse. My husband, Mark, we reside at 2009 Manhattan Drive in the town of Verona. We are looking to change, we are, we're actually doing a lot line adjustment with our adjacent neighbor, and we're looking to change that from RH1 to R2 so that it matches our current zoning.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Purpose of it is that there is, we have a joint well with three, four of our neighbors, and the water line goes through that area that we're looking to, to move the lot line through so that the residents at 1979 who are not serviced by that well no longer have that.
Burden.
That burden on their property.
If it ever brings.
Yeah. So, and we do have a joint well agreement on file with the registered deeds December of 2015.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Verona has approved this petition with no conditions.
I'll move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you, thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,162. Bueller Family in town of Westport. Hello.
I'm Rick Schmidt. I'm an attorney, a boardman, a clerk. I represent the Bueller Estate and Bueller Family Trust. I guess, is that the only picture I have? I've got a picture here that kind of gives the big picture. We're seeking a rezone of land from A1 exclusive to A4. This is in connection with a CSM that's being prepared. You can see the CSM up there. Can I approach the picture?
Sure.
So, really what's going on? The Bueller Estate and Bueller Trust owns all this land. Jerry Bueller owns this piece here. The CSM does a number of things. It takes this land and adds it to Jerry's. This is Jackie Healy's, who's Jerry's sister. The CSM also clarifies some lot line adjustments because of driveways outside of where they actually are, things of that sort, subject systems, a bit out of whack as well. And then this lined up here is the A1 exclusive. This is 31.7 acres as a result of the CSM. As a result, we seek A4 to make it comply with the ordinances. Jerry's here over there, and I'm sure he's not going to oppose it. We've gone through, because of the various municipalities here, we've gone through Westport as well as Wantakee, and everyone has been in favor. So, oh, and there are already old restrictions in place, so there won't be further residences on any of this land as a result, so we seek the rezon.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Westport has approved this petition with 10 conditions. Condition two is the only pertinent one that is applicable to this property.
Move approval with the one in town conditions. I'll second. I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
It says something in the staff report about a proposed purchase by Denny County. Do you know what that's about?
They all knew about it. I didn't know much about it.
Okay.
Yeah, when I went to the town of Westport meeting, they told me, and imagine my surprise, so.
Okay, here you thought you were taking care of the family.
Yeah, that, now, they told me that the county's buying this as a buffer.
Okay. Maybe Roger knows. Do you know more about that?
No, I do not. I did not work on this petition.
They unified my lack of knowledge.
The attorney is the last to know, you know.
We're not leveraging, that's why we have our creator county government.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye with the conditions.
Aye.
And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next is rezone petition 11,163. Mara Zimmerman in the town of Dunn. You can grab another chair if you'd like.
I'm Mara Zimmerman from the town of Dunn.
I'm Early Olson.
I'm John Kessler.
We own, four of us, basically two couples, we own 115 acres in the town of Dunn. That's a zoned A1 exclusive. We'd like permission to rezone two residential lots, two acres each, from A1 exclusive to RH1. I plead some ignorance here. I don't know all the rules on process, and so we do have some questions also.
Okay.
The basic location for our lots and size, the two acres, you know, other than when the certified survey adjusts the lines, we're, you know, that's approximately where we want the lots. We do have some questions about the driveway, if we need to adjust the driveway because of something in the town of Dunn. We have several options for different driveways because Tower Road is right there, and we're wondering if, if, at the beginning of the meeting, you said that you guys don't approve anything until it goes through the town of Dunn?
Correct.
Okay, so it still has to go through the town of Dunn, gets approved, and then it comes, and then you guys?
Correct.
Okay.
So, we schedule public hearings once a month, and to not hold up the process, we gather information tonight, but if the town hasn't taken action, then our rules are we'll postpone it until the town has it, to our next meeting.
Okay.
But appreciate, you're giving us the information this evening, and plus getting your questions.
So, the town has not approved this, right?
We haven't even submitted anything to the town.
No, I don't think so, yeah. So, this is just, I guess, information.
Still thinking. Yeah. Well, I would just think they have to have submitted it to the town because otherwise we wouldn't know about it, correct?
We send the town clerk information at the deadline, so they received this information about six weeks ago, but it's up to the landowners to fill out an application at the town hall to get it on the agenda.
Okay. Town of Dunn is a little bit different, as I understand it, from the other townships. They require a four, they'll put it on their agenda. We have to have the certified survey map complete, everything, stakes in the ground. So that, I think, is why we're here, is to get that process finalized, so that we can present it to, so we can apply to the town of Dunn, and then.
Roger Dan's out in the hall. Would he be able to answer the questions while they're here?
Regarding which one? That the CSM has to be finalized?
Yeah.
I don't believe so. There was a preliminary map done. I don't understand why they, the zoning has to come before the actual approval of the certified survey map. So I could talk with the town, because that's rather peculiar, but I'll have to get down to them.
I wonder if it's more that the property needs to be surveyed, not necessarily that there's a, that the survey.
There's a preliminary certified survey. It's 90% done. It just doesn't have the signature.
Dan can't finalize a CSM without proper zoning.
That is correct. That is correct. This, this configuration here, it does, one of the lots does not have frontage, so they chose to do a shared access agreement, and you said something about the Tower Road?
Well, there is an, I mean, if you look at this property, this border, there's two different streets that you can get to these lots from. If we do, and we can do a shared driveway from either one of them.
Or we could do.
Or we can do separate driveways if you want to.
Yes.
There's, there's four of us trying to come up with an agreement on these two lots, and.
We're not set.
It's a moving target.
So my third, I'm sorry, might there be a possibility that you're talking about for one of the lots fronting into Tower Road?
Mm-hmm.
No, you're good. I, I, it is, Supervisor, the town, do you have any questions?
No, did, actually, I don't think Roger actually gave the staff.
No.
So, so you guys can't move forward with it until you hear something from the town of Dunn?
That is correct.
Okay, just, just for clarity, we're trying to have clarity for mine, is, is there an application?
Yes, there is an application.
It's on our schedule.
There's a formal application. It's on our schedule.
Yeah.
The town of Dunn has received all this information. We provide information to, well, Williamson Surveying was your surveyor that submitted the proposed map and the application to rezone. It says specifically, the first item is contact the town to tell them that you have made application with the county and that you need to get on their agendas. So we provide that information to all the applicants. Hopefully, I presume that your surveyor did not provide that information to you.
No.
Not yet. But they, we can't get on their agenda until the survey is done, until, I think that was the chair asked.
I will talk with Ben tomorrow to get it all straightened out, and Erica.
Okay. So, this is my concern, that you've come here tonight, and you sense that there's still some steps that you realize you have to do that, sounds like they haven't been done. So that's why we're all a little out of, out of whack. But, so I, anything else that you wanted to be sure that we, the committee heard you say?
I guess we were confused because we thought we had come here before we could get a certified survey. And that's not true.
Yes, you need to get approval in order to record the certified survey map with the registered deeds. And I just have one question.
Yeah, I just.
The zoning has to be approved before you can do a certified.
The zoning has to be approved before we can do a certified survey on the property.
Okay, so we have to get this rezoned to RH1 before we can do a certified survey. So we have to come back here for that, right?
The rezone, the certified survey gets approved by staff.
Yeah, before the certified survey map can be submitted to me for my review, the rezone has to be approved by the town of Dunn as well as this committee, and then the CSM can be submitted.
So you don't need to come to another meeting for the CSM to submit it to me?
For the CSM.
And you were looking at revising the lots?
A little bit, yeah.
Somewhat, if possible. That's what we want to find out, if this is, if those are chiseled in stone at this point.
No, no, they're not chiseled in stone. So this is the opportune moment to figure out what you want to do with your property. It would be very beneficial if you were going out to Tower Road to have the lot line go all the way out to Tower Road, so you have a compliant lot that has road frontage on a public right of way.
It can't be an easement through A-land?
Just, just an FYI, my reflection is the town, except representative area. The town doesn't particularly care for shared driveways if they don't have to.
They didn't, when we asked that question, they didn't have a problem with it as long as we had a shared driveway agreement, so...
What, we're not, we're not...
Well, we'll, we'll just hold on a second. I just want to be sure, if you had anything else you wanted to be sure we heard tonight, or if supervisors had any following questions for you before I continue with my procedures. Anything? Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Dunn is still waiting on to act on this petition.
Postpone it, second.
Okay, over motion and second to postpone due to lack of town action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And we are postponing it.
So it'll be scheduled for a committee meeting after we've gotten a report on action from the town.
And so please take advantage of calling county staff and getting all your questions answered. I would hate to see you drive back down here and not have your questions answered already.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next rezone, 11,164, Delors Best in the town of Montrose.
Good evening. I'm Ed Short, N8096 Bueller Road, Belleville, Wisconsin. I'm here on behalf of Delors Best Trust. It's two 40-acre parcels or tracts of land, as mentioned in town of Montrose. It's partially divided by county highway. It's all A1 exclusive right now. They're looking to create four parcels. One has the existing farmhouse, which will be rezoned to A2. They're creating a new residential lot up in the northwest corner to RH1. And then the two subsequent remnant parcels will be A2 as well because they fall underneath the 35 acres to meet ordinance. And those two lots would have a deed restriction from further residential development since the two splits would be used up.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Montrose has approved this petition, conditioned upon the northwest parcel and the southeast parcel being deed restricted to prohibit a residential development.
I have approval with those conditions? Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve with conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone petition 11,165, Bullseye LLC in the town of Rutland.
My name is Eric Grober. I reside at 742 Foxville Road, Oregon, Wisconsin. I'm here to petition for, we have, I represent Bullseye LLC and property on Highway 138, which is currently zoned recreational, RE1, surrounded by commercial and an intersection of Highway 14 and Highway 138. We're asking to rezone the parcel to C2 commercial use.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Rutland has approved this petition, conditioned on limiting the range of commercial land uses. They're listed in your, in your summer report. Staff does have concerns with regards to this petition. Currently, we find that it is inconsistent with the town plan. This property is currently planned for agricultural preservation. Commercial zoning of this property appears to be inconsistent with that plan. Also, no development plan showing roads, lots, or typical layouts have been provided to county staff. So that's another concern. Staff is suggesting that this petition be postponed to allow time for the applicant to provide a development plan for the property, as well as providing an opportunity for the town to revise their comprehensive plan.
I have a postponement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Do you have questions for us before?
No, I don't think so. I've been talking with Maggie and...
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is rezone petition 11,166, Screamin Norwegian Farms, town of Cottage Grove.
Hello, Tim Thorson, Royal Local Associates, I'm representing the Screamin Acres. They're looking at changing zoning from A1 exclusive to R1A to create a residential lot there at the end of the cul-de-sac. They'll fill that cul-de-sac. So, that's what we're doing.
And you're speaking for, a previous petition was 11,136, if you see that's down on our...
Yeah, that's a couple, a couple ways, yeah.
Anything else you'd like to add? Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition, conditioned on the applicant identifying the, where the residential dwelling or the residential development right is coming from. Staff does have concerns that the applicant has not provided the information yet. So it's kind of hard to use a development right when we don't know where it's coming from.
We, yeah, sorry.
So staff would suggest this being postponed until such time as the applicant provide that information on which one of the Screamin Norwegian Farm properties that the housing density right is coming from.
We do, well, I've been working with Pam late last week, and we do have that, where we want that split to come from. It's just south of here, just south of this land here. So we do, we do have this. I will get in contact with it tomorrow to, to move this forward.
Supervisor Miles?
Roger, should we have, when we eventually act on approval of this, potential approval of this, should the action not be that the sending area is identified, but that there be, you know, there be a deed restriction or some document filed with the register of deeds documenting the transfer?
That's correct. As part of the approval, we should identify which farm it's coming from and which property. We will place a deed notice on that property that says, one, housing density right has been removed from that farm. We also place a notice on that lot that says this was created from transferring of a development right from that area. And also, we are suggesting that the remainder of this original farm be deed restricted to prohibit further residential development as well.
And when that's, when that document is filed for the sending area, it does require some type of authorization by being on that document, by the property owner?
Yes, there's a whole bunch of documentation for the transfer of development rights. There's like four documents that need to be recorded to ensure, to accurately reflect that a housing density right moved from one place to another, and make sure that everybody is aware, any future owners of the sending area, it's identified through deed notice, how many housing density rights are remaining on that original farm.
Thanks. Any questions?
I'll move postponement to second. Pending the identification and documentation of the sending area.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And it's postponed. And you understand why, because we don't have the paperwork.
Will that be to the next meeting, or when is that?
That's correct.
That'll be our next meeting.
Yes, we, we have requested that information several times, and nobody came forward with regards to which farm it was coming from.
Okay. I just got, I got the call from Pam late last week, and I didn't, okay, thanks.
I checked with her this morning.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Rezone petition 11,167, Janet Hoops.
Dan?
I'm Dan Burncott, surveyor. Janet is here. And what we're proposing is, is that currently Janet has two buildable, or she's got her home that's on the lower flag lot that's highlighted. She's got a lot to the west that was created at the same time as her home site was. She did have a density study where she's got one more split coming. What we're looking to do is kind of reconfigure the land so that when we're all said and done, we'll be creating one new 35-acre parcel using the density study split, and then reconfiguring the one lot to the west to a different site. So basically, the farm's being split up into two 35-acre parcels, and with a 40-some acre parcel being left over with her existing house. We have gone to the township, met with the plan commission. They basically were fine with what we had. They just wanted us to go to the highway department about, they, we actually weren't asking for a driveway, and the plan commission asked us to go back to the highway and ask for a driveway opening to the road. So that's why we're not through the township yet, so we're still working with them.
Anything else you'd like to add?
That's basically it.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
This petition is still pending at the town of Cross Plains.
I have a postponement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second postpone. Any further discussion? Yes.
Good question, if, if we have lots that are 35 and 40 acres, why A2 zoning instead of A1 exclusive?
Because we can't put house on exclusive. That's correct.
Okay, so you're, I, my apologies, so it's for the purpose of placing those. Okay, thanks.
We will be suggesting that a deed restriction be placed on the large parcels to prohibit further land division.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And it's postponed. And you understand why?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for coming. Next is rezone petition 11,168, Hack Trust in the town of Primrose.
Bill Hack, 1582 Liberty Street, Monroeville. My petition is for a rezone from A1 exclusive to RRH home sites and Primrose.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I want to add that to my trust for future use.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to add? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I just have a question, if I may?
Go ahead.
Since we've had so much rain, I own the, I'm Steve Shervin, along with my wife, Chris, on the mill, on the base of the hill where this development is going to take place. And since it's at the base of the hill, where's all that water going to go from the development? That's the question I have. Is there any diversion or, or anything like that that's going to happen? Because water does come down that hill pretty fast.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hack, do you want to say?
Where the driveways are presently sited will affect, because of the, it will affect.
So you're not changing anything land-wise?
No. Just, I'm sure he's worried about where the driveways are sited.
On the next one, maybe four houses?
Yeah. Roger?
I, I think there's another person that wishes to speak.
Did you get a, go ahead.
I, I don't, but I have a few, like...
Pardon?
Yeah.
You did fill out a form?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess I wouldn't so much represent myself as an opposition. This has been a long time in the formation, and I think it's pretty much inevitable, but I just wanted to make sure that the board or the committee understands exactly this road isn't, you know, ideal for, I think, the number of parcels that are going to end up on this property. If my look at the Dane, access Dane is correct, it looks like there'll be, with these additional four, there'll be nine approved parcels, and just on serving, being served by Liberty Street. And I guess I'm concerned about the traffic on that road. I think this was, you know, originally designed as a road to serve a farm, and now we're going to essentially have a little subdivision back there.
Any specific questions that you had or other stages? I just want to, and I want to confirm that you just wanted your concerns addressed, and you're not speaking in opposition?
Extremely concerned, because I, well, I'm concerned that this will affect the value of my property, but that's irrelevant. But, and I guess I just want to make sure that the committee really understands exactly how many parcels there are, parcels that have been approved back there, which can be developed, and then ultimately, I think there's up to nine that could be approved and altered by that road, so...
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I started this whole thing in 2012. My proposal to the town board would have only added one more housing facility on Liberty Street. They didn't like that proposal, even though my proposal was all four sites would have been pasture land. Their proposal was activate land out production, but this is all, this is the only option they've left me with.
With the town?
With the town.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Not this one.
Okay. Any, go ahead.
Just on the...
Bill, do you mind closing the door?
A minor point, just to cast some light on the issue of the, the traffic. The rule of thumb that, that say Pam, that you're a traffic engineer would use, and the committee may well be aware of this, is that single-family residents produces, on average, 10 trips per day. So if you have nine homes all accessing Liberty Road, you'd be looking at upwards of, you know, 90 to 100 trips per day on that, that road. And I, I don't know anything about Liberty Road and what it's designed... about Liberty Road and what its design capacity was, but, you know, you're getting up in the area of, you know, close to 100 trips per day. So the road would need to take that into account and the town would need to consider that in evaluating whether or not it's, it's appropriate, for whatever that might be worth.
Anything else? Roger?
This petition is still pending at the town of Primrose.
Okay. So the town hasn't had a meeting?
Yeah, we've had several meetings. They approved this so I could go ahead and do the preliminary CSO. I don't believe they haven't something.
Okay. And I wanted to make sure the neighbors had an opportunity to go to the town meetings?
Yeah, they have. Yeah, Mr. Lester's been there. I don't think Shirven hasn't been.
Questions?
I'll move to postpone it and note that based on the information we have, an outstanding petition, we just said that town hasn't completed its action on it. So the neighbors who express concerns should contact the town and find out where it is in the process there.
Because I hear you have concerns as well about the way.
Well, I did this whole process as I was on the planning commission. My, this thing started as in 2010, I was the planning commissioner, I was on the comprehensive committee. We decided that when an applicant comes for a rezone, that they show where their future rezones would be. So what I did is I wanted to actually do a CUP, bring my daughter into the farming operation, livestock operation. And I think they treated me right on that because I spoke up against them during our comprehensive plan. So this is kind of helping them from. And I think, I think all the evidence that I can find actually shows that.
Okay. I'm going to take care of this first. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to provide a couple of comments, just for those that spoke, thank you on both sides for speaking on this. And just to let folks know, concerns about potential impact on property value, traffic concerns, they're valid concerns to raise. And, and I just heard some apprehension of saying you're opposed to the proposal, but you raise valid concerns that we need to consider and that the town needs to consider. So don't be apologetic for having those concerns. And to Todd's remark about the, the rule of thumb on the traffic impact, I would also add that, that, that idea of that rule of thumb, I think it's with the idea that the road that's being impacted is a fall through street in this situation. And so that, and so just, just something else for people to consider. Thanks.
And we do have the motion and the second to postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's postponed. All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Next is rezone petition 11,169. James Hutchins.
My name is Gary Palmer, 2392 White Oak Trail, Oregon. I have approached the Hutchins and I want to get the approval for a split off of their farm so I can, a retirement, a one story retirement home with my daughter and grandchildren. This would entitle a couple of separate units or living units. The town, we went for a duplex R3 and there's, they're considering it. The town has not decided whether they'll let me do R3 or not. Do we have the density units? So I'm here to get the split okay, I guess. And then I got a meeting with the town to make an application there for, for either R1 or R3, I think.
It's either R3A, which allows a single family and duplexes, or I believe they're looking at R1, which would only allow a single family house.
Which, which is the one with, with caretakers?
Dependent living?
Dependent living.
Yes. That, that would be R1 or R3. Yes.
R1 or R3, yes. So dependent, we're either going to go, I got to order that out with the town.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
This petition is still pending at the town Dunk.
Okay. We have a motion and a second postpone due to lack of town action and supervisor miles.
Quick question, Roger. It says in the report that the, the town's policy on, are in clear on treatment of duplex under the density limitation. So it's a question, is a duplex one split or two? Or what's the, what's the quandary?
In speaking with the town planner, she feels that the duplex could be counted as one housing density right, given the size of the lot.
I have.
You have some further information on?
Well, I, I went to them originally and sat down with Ben there and we went through the book and we read that duplexes were allowed in the town, town of Dunk. I went to the planning commission. There was not a majority there. And we presented the site, everybody there, there were still only three out of four there. Everybody that was there said, well, that's a wonderful idea. And, and was no opposition. So then I proceeded to get a survey called a surveyor. And then one surveyor said, well, you're going to have a problem because it terminates at the end of the street and there's an ordinance that says, there's an ordinance that says you can't have a driveway at the end of the street. You got to have a cul-de-sac. So we're working on that right of way situation and we have to get a right of way for the farmer to get in and farm the rest of it. But where was I going with this? So then, so then we.
Had a second meeting with the town.
Had a second meet, second, well, then the surveyor says, get a letter from the town saying that what you heard was true. So she sent me back a letter and said that that was, that's what their understanding was. And they, they still had, at the last meeting, they still have a quandary on whether a duplex is allowed or not. And I, at this point, well, you've heard this stuff, but I've got all of the surveyors, I've done all my homework, I thought, you know. So, you know, right now, I think what we need to, what I thought, what I thought we needed to do was get your approval for a split and then come back for a, saying what the town says for a zoning and then get a final approval or something. That's what I thought was going to happen. But I don't know whether I'm misunderstanding what's, what we need to do or not.
Maybe I could show some clarity. As we discussed on the phone, that we would get the public hearing out of the way to see if there's any public opposition. There was public opposition at the second meeting at the town. The residents were opposed to having a duplex there. It's, it's still pending at the town, but we are working through this process to get the town action report so that it could be presented to this committee.
But we had no opposition.
That is correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, postpone it. Say aye.
Aye.
And anyone postpone? Okay. Next, CUP 02385.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Paul Johnson from Boardman to Clark on behalf of Sun Prairie Concrete, John Belkin on the end, and Dennis Cook, the agent for Sun Prairie Concrete, also here. Originally, the application was filed for a conditional use permit for mineral extraction on a 29 acre parcel, excuse me, parcel of land. Since the original application was filed, the application has been amended to no longer seek a mineral extraction permit at all. All that is being requested at this time is a conditional use permit to have clean fill be brought in to the site for the purpose of furthering the reclamation of a former quarry and, and pit on this 29 acre site. So the request at this point in time is only to, is only to accept clean fill. We have reviewed the staff report that has been prepared and had no, no concerns with the report at all. The, the staff report does indicate a, a 20 year conditional use permit or maybe a 10 year. I wasn't quite sure which direction the staff was recommending. We would certainly view well open to the 20 year permit. Basically, the entire process that is going to be followed by Sun Prairie Concrete going forward is to reduce the height of the vertical side walls that currently exist in the pit to make it more, to make it more appealing and beneficial to the neighbors when the, when the pit is actually closed. So that is what we are seeking. And we have not been through the town of Burke yet. We did attend the July Plan Commission. They had a quorum but did not have enough to take any action in their opinion. So we are back on their agenda for the August meeting.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this moment, no.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
This petition is still pending at the town of Burke.
Postpone it. Second.
We have a motion and a second postpone. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's postponed.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Okay. From our previous meetings, petition, rezone petition 11,136, Screaming Norwegian Farms in the town of Kajg Grove.
Aye. Tim Thorson. This petition is, has two parcels. They want to, want to rezone A1 exclusive to R1A in both of the parcels. Originally was three, R3A on the one to the east, but that has been revised to R1A. This is basically just separating the residents from the egg farm. There are, sorry, is that okay? There are conditions through the town.
Yep. This petition was postponed on the May 23rd zoning and land regulation committee meeting due to some changes occurring on this. The petition went from R3A to just rezoning one of the properties, back to the two properties. But as it comes to this committee tonight, it is two separate lots to be zoned R1A and with conditions being placed on the properties limiting the second residences. The one is to be removed within a year and then the one small, I'm going to have to say shack, to be removed at the sale of the property.
Okay. I'll move approval with those conditions. Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezone 11,137. Lucy S. Kurt Manhart in town Burke.
This petition was postponed on the May 23rd zoning and land regulation committee. It was postponed due to no town action. Since that time, the town of Burke has acted on this petition. It was approved with the large portion being zoned RH4 and the smaller area being zoned to R-1.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's approved. Next is rezone 11,139, Esso Family Trust, town of Cross Plains.
This petition was postponed at the June 27th zoning and land regulation committee due to no town action. Since that time, the town of Cross Plains has approved this petition. The petition was approved with no conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's approved. 11,148, Thomas Schaller in the town of Deerfield.
Did we forget?
I have none. You don't have?
144.
Do I?
Versus Farms. Okay.
Versus Farms in the town of Dunker. Getting a little ahead of myself.
Awesome. There we go. Just seen off of my, I'm on the wakeover here. This petition was postponed at the June 27th zoning and land regulation committee. It was postponed due to no town action. Since that time, the town of Dunker has approved this petition. The petition was approved conditioned upon the balance of the A1 exclusive property being deed restricted to prohibit further residential development.
So we have a motion and a second to approve with the town conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. And it's approved. Okay. Now, 11,148, Thomas Schaller in the town of Deerfield.
This petition was postponed at the June 27th meeting. And I believe it was postponed due to no town action. Since that time, the town of Deerfield has approved this petition. There was one concern with regards to this petition and that had to do with a 1900 or 1941.
1899.
Eighteen.
99.
99. Access easement. Since that time, the adjacent neighbor that was a party to this easement has relinquished the easement. So.
So that's an old neighbor.
Glad he's still around.
I have a question for petition.
Go ahead.
What year was the access granted?
1899.
Thank you.
And since then, and you think about what it was like in 1899, well, the, and literally in the easement, it talks about ingress and egress by foot or by ox cart or by vehicle. And so that means in 1899, obviously, it would have been a field because they wouldn't put it through the woods that's there now. So there's the woods there over that easement. That's got to be 70 year old trees, total trees. So anyway, the guy didn't really need the easement. Plus, he never even knew about it until he told them.
And the trees would be the ox carts.
And the trees would really be hard on the ox cart. One would lose.
Okay. I'll second.
I'll move for both the town conditions or staff recommended deed restriction.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with staff recommended deed restriction. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Just saying, last night I watched a murder mystery that was in Britain and they referred to a 500 year old deed. So I was like.
This was about 116 years, 17, 18 years.
There you go.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to Platts and Certified Survey Maps.
Yeah, the first plant is located in the village of Kajg Grove. This would be 44 certification, not objection. This is on the west end of the village, consists of 72 This is on the west end of the village, consists of 72 lots, a little over 36 acres. Outlet two is being dedicated for park purposes. County Highway BB, County Cottage Grove Road is the, kind of the major corridor that runs east-west through there. Outlets one and three are being dedicated to the village for stormwater management. Move certification, no objection.
We have a motion and a second for certification of no objection. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. And so that one is certified, no objection.
The next final plat is located in the town of Middleton, Daybreak Valley. This is before you for signature. This is 41 residential lots, five outlots, a little over 56 acres. This committee on January 10th approved the final plat subject to the following conditions. Everything is, is basically squared away and ready for the signature by the chair.
We have a motion and a second for final approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. And it's approved for my signature. Wellington Trace.
Wellington Trace, this was postponed at the last meeting that we had. This is located in the town of Bristol, 33 lots, a little over 40 acres. The zoning district is A1, so there's no rezone being proposed. Pam Andros has reviewed this with regards to the county plan. The only concern that she had, that we talked about at the previous meeting, was the issue with the hydroic water, hydroic soils and the high water table. All the other conditions, for the most part, are fairly standard. We did add one condition at the last meeting. All basement foundations should be at least two feet above the highest groundwater elevation. In your packet, there should be an exhibit map of the developer engineer showing the various lots throughout the plat. And going through some of the calculations of, a couple of weeks ago, we've got anywhere from 2.9 to three feet, 3.4 feet, 4.3, 2.3, and 2.1. Lot 30 looks like to be just at the 2.0 threshold.
Those are distances to the bottom of the footing. So those footings are another 11 inches, so those slabs, three feet is what we're going for.
And you brought a chart too.
Well, it's the same exhibit you got.
Okay, just-
Is that the one you're looking for?
Yes, this is the one here.
Okay.
Anything else you wanted to add tonight?
I'm Gary Blazek, I'm with your back for associates. We're meeting with the county and the town on Thursday to discuss the same thing, the groundwater and then the flow coming from the adjacent properties coming through our property, so.
Yeah, it sounds like the town of Bristol, I think it's their town board, town chair, if you got maybe some outstanding questions. So I'm gonna go out there, 1:30 on Thursday to meet with developer engineer and Mike Lawton, the attorney, just to kind of help facilitate some of this stuff, kind of where the county's at with regards to the high water table issue and so.
So the town hasn't finalized their action?
And this is just a preliminary plat at this point.
Just a question, given that it's a preliminary plat, but it sounds like there's outstanding, still outstanding questions and so forth. I guess what are the criteria for, what is the criteria on what we should be weighing when considering approval or not of a preliminary plat?
Yeah, I mean, what I've got before you is just, you know, outlining the conditions of approval in regards to this plat going forward. It sounds like, you know, the town of Bristol has some questions or issues. And I think some of those were trying to be addressed through email, but it sounded like they still wanted to have a meeting on this. So, I mean, I think the committee doesn't feel comfortable with granting conditional approval of this preliminary plat until the town has gone through, you know.
Have we in the past?
You know, at this point, you know, it's not like we're looking for signature on the plat. This is just a, you know, conditional approval of the preliminary plat. You know, these are the conditions that we've looked at and are asking for, so.
You've made the adjustments that-
Oh, yeah.
Requested the last time you were before us.
You got, I would put it to you this way. From my perspective, it sounds like the town of Bristol just doesn't quite feel comfortable granting maybe their conditional approval. That's kind of how I, that's how I view it as.
But I think, you know, my question is, you don't, I understand we tick town action on petitions for rezon and CUPs, but for these, I don't really-
And, yeah, and that's the, and then the other thing to add is we don't necessarily need town approval prior to a preliminary plat being acted on.
And then I just want to make the point again, you've done what we've asked.
Right, and we've done what the, what the towns asked us to. We've been before them already and I think after the meeting Thursday, everything should be good. So, yeah, we've done everything that you've asked and that's, and I think you were looking for two foot between the groundwater, we went three.
Is there any update with regards to road control, stormwater, from land and water resources?
No, we submitted, we submitted a bunch of material last week.
So I still pending?
Yeah.
They're, yeah, we've still gotta work with those guys and make sure they're okay with everything.
In order for a preliminary plat to be approved or accepted by a committee, the committee should be comfortable with the number of lots that are being presented. Also, road layout, detention areas, or any park or open space dedication. So they're the core elements that are on a preliminary plat. If approved, it grants approval for the final plat to occur. So if, say that the committee said, well, there should be only three lots instead of 30 and 4?
32.
Yeah, three, this would be the time to do that because once the preliminary plat is approved, that's pretty much locked into the, you know, it grants approval for the final cleanup on the final plat. The final plat could also, that's where we get down to the minutia on the elevations, checking to make sure that all the base elevations are addressed due to the high water table.
I have a little postponement. Based on what Roger just said, it's possible, I, you know, it's not gonna go from 33 to three lots, but it might go from 33 to 31 or two. So I think it would be prudent to let the process play out a little more.
I'll, I'll second the motion to postpone, part because, I think, if I recall correctly, I think this was the one where I had some question about, about land and water resources weighing in, given the hydro soils and so forth and how that might, how the stormwater flow may affect the sizing of stormwater facilities and if that's gonna have an impact on the lot layout and so forth, so.
And you were working with Pam Andros, did I hear right?
Yeah, with Jeremy Belusak and Josh Harder. Stormwater stuff.
Are they gonna be a part of the meeting on Thursday?
Yeah, I think, I think Jeremy's gonna be there.
Okay, good.
Because one of the other things that the engineers, developers looking to do is actually bring in additional fill. So that, I think, touches based on what you're talking about with regards to additional stormwater.
Well, fill affects your elevations for some of those low spots and so.
Right, raising up the ground so that we made above those.
But when you're putting fill, then you're also affecting flow of stormwater potentially.
Well, not, no, not really. The stormwater is still gonna continue on the path that it is now. Because we're bringing in fill, those, I mean, if the impervious is going up like we're putting roads in, that would affect the amount of stormwater that we need. But as far as fill goes, that really would have little, if any, impact.
Fill's not gonna change infiltration rates.
Well, we, that is a requirement we are doing. We gotta do 90% infiltration and all that stuff. That, those calculations that all have been done and Jeremy and the county have those they're looking at. So that's part of the stormwater approval too for those guys.
Maybe, maybe at the next meeting, the August 8th meeting, we'll have a better understanding of where the town of Bristol is at. But maybe in addition, we can get Jeremy Belusak to put something in writing to kind of, you know, state his opinion of where things are at. I, it's highly unlikely that there will be stormwater approvals by August 8th, but maybe there's some type of a memo that Jeremy can put forward to the committee and just kind of address some of those issues.
Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of postponement, say aye. And it's postponed. Thank you. Okay.
And then the last one is Cherrywood Ridge. This is a new plat in the town of Middleton. Consists of 23 residential lots with five outlots, a little over 32 acres. The current zoning district is A1 as well, so there's no proposed petition. And this is just before you for acceptance and scheduled for future consideration, which rules likely will be August 8th. What I've done with this letter is just kind of put forth the, the appropriate conditions on the applicable and granting conditional approval for this preliminary plat.
I'll move acceptance.
We have a motion and second to accept and scheduled for August 8th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's accepted.
And then the report with regards to the approved certified survey maps, what I just did is, there was a couple more that came through this afternoon, so I just kind of updated the list. And so what do you see before you, the hard copy is, is the updated version? There's no action needed.
No, I have this and you have that. I'm just, you can't open any of my attachments tonight anyways. Every time. Okay. Any questions? Okay, did you have any questions or concerns? Thanks for hanging in. Thanks, Roger. We have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.